Meeting is now called to order. This is a special call meeting. If you would, please join Vice Chairman Langley for our invocation and Commissioner Waters for our pledge.
Let's pray. Eternal God our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this moment in time. We are grateful that you have allowed us to come together one more time to do the business of your county. And God, we just pray now that you will grant us your wisdom and sincerity to do what's best for the citizens of this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask if anyone here tonight has a conflict of interest on the matters that's come before the commissioners? Hearing none, we move on. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six, one. Motion passes. Item for discussion tonight is to go over the Pitt County Detention Center housing of Beaufort County inmates. And I'd like to start out by just kind of giving a short recap of some of the involvement that I've had. I think some of you have seen, if not all, the midrandum, if I can get it out, that Judge Sermon sent out on June 9th discussing the closure of the detention center. The people that were summoned for that were myself, county manager, Ernie Coleman or doesn't he, from Pitt County, Melvin Longhorn, Malcolm Longhorn, I apologize, he did not show, and Sheriff Paula Dance was there, and Scott Elliott, and Mr. Majors, who's one of the jailers over at Pitt County. Waylon basically did an overview of that he was gonna declare an emergency situation as a result of the timing of repairs and coinciding with the COVID-19 pandemic, and he needed to shut the jail down. He also was gonna make a order of commitment that moving the inmates to, he had the right to move the inmates to an adjoining county where they would obey that order. So we started off like that. We sit down and Judge Sermon started talking about what he liked to do and get input from everyone there. He started off beginning with his opening statement, talked about that we should have built a jail seven years ago, and the burden that it's put on this court system and the sheriff's department would be nonexistent, but because of the county commissioners, there is no jail at this time. That's what, from Judge Sermon's. He also stated that because of the Beaufort County Detention Center is unfilled and not a secure place, that he was going to declare an emergency situation because of the repairs that need to be made. And he was gonna close the detention center as soon as possible under this order. Waylon asked if anyone had anything to say. The first person that spoke was Sheriff Dance from Pitt County, and stated that she had a block over there that she would rent to us, and that she had been in conversation with Sheriff Coleman, and the agreement was $100 a day for all, for 96 inmates, and that was it. And we would have to staff that jail. We went on quite a bit in discussion. Waylon talked to her about some negotiating. We weren't getting anywhere, so he asked myself, a representative from Pitt County, who was obviously Sheriff Dance, Scott Elliott, who's their manager, and Brian Alligood and I went back and had to ask us to go back in the jury room and try to hammer out some of the logistics of this, trying to get some of the calls down. We were back there 45 minutes to an hour. Not a lot was accomplished, so we came back out and told Judge Sermon that we were at an impasse, and he tried to again work with the sheriff in Pitt County to no avail, so he decided he was gonna go ahead and issue his orders to commitment. Later that Friday, that was Friday, again, we were there from 10 o'clock to about 12:30. Late Friday afternoon, Scott called Brian Alligood, Scott Elliott is the county manager in Pitt County, called Brian Alligood, and there's been some talking, some negotiating, and that's kind of where we are right now. I'm gonna let Brian now take over. He has a spreadsheet, and I'll be glad to answer if anybody has any direct questions of me about the meeting. I'll be, do what I can. If not, Brian, if you'll come up.
Well, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, well, one thing I'd like to know is, who prompted the judge to do this? Did he volunteer to do this on his own, or was there some communication from sheriffs or commissioners or anybody?
My impression was this is Waylon, the way he went on and on about it is that he was concerned that he had inmates down there, he wanted to put more inmates down there. He feels like that's, sending them to jail gets their attention, and so he wanted to have the ability to send them to a safe location. Didn't feel like that was happening with all the work that's going on down there. He just didn't want people working and inmates all in the same location.
Oh, is any part of this meeting being filmed by the county?
All of it is.
Okay. Well, you know, we vote, Mr. Chairman, on certain things, and then you come in here and you find out it's not being filmed when it helps certain people, and if it helps other people, it is being filmed, so that's a legitimate question. Okay? Now, are we sending, what was, did the judge say what was wrong with the system that we were using where we had essentially people spread out over half of the state?
I'll let Brian handle most of that. For an example, Dare County no longer takes females. Craven County is getting ready to shut us down, and I'll let Brian give us that exact date, but if you will.
Well, I'm still, you know, as a commissioner, I've been called into a room to approve $300,000. I have no background. I have no information. Nobody has bothered to inform the entire Board of County Commissioners. We have a few people who've been out doing deals and doing things, the backroom stuff, and the rest of us don't know about it. We have much, many more rights than what we've been presented with or given here. So, you know, I don't think that Judge Sermon's broke up one morning and said, "I'm gonna shut the jail down." I mean, obviously somewhere he was not getting service that he felt like he should be getting. And that's my question. Was there any problems in providing service when people are brought into the jail or they're sentenced with sending them to places across the state? Were we being refused, were they being refused to take people? What's, you know, how did this, this didn't just happen.
Again, I can't answer that. I can tell you the, when he summoned me to meet, that's when I went in. That's, that's the memo that said, "Hey, we need a designated," they said the same thing for chairman over in Pitt County.
Has an order been signed by the judge?
Not that I know of. I know he was, he planned to at the end of that meeting, but again, there was some negotiating done. During the meeting, there was zero negotiating. It was nine, we had one inmate, or 96, it's $100 a day times 96. Well, we had one there, or 96.
I'm not so worried about the pricing because there's no question we're being taken, but as I am about how the judge came to do what he is doing. Judges don't just do things without being prompted or without having a reason or without having some background. And what you're telling me is nobody knows what the background was. Was the manager, were you in contact with the judge complaining about service? Well, I noticed that there's nobody here from the sheriff's department. Isn't that amazing? And they're not here because somebody might ask them an embarrassing question. I'll ask the county attorney, did anybody contact you about poor service from the jail? So where is the sheriff tonight? Was he invited to be here? Was he noticed of this meeting? Where's the clerk?
She's on vacation.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, I'm very concerned about the way that we're doing business. I think there's more to this story than what we're being told.
Just to set the record straight, Commissioner Richardson, Judge Sermon's or no one from the sheriff's department's been in contact with me either. So he didn't come from Commissioner Waters.
Well, it looks like the guilty culprit is not here. The sheriff's department is not here to answer questions about this. I think they should be here. I think we should shut this meeting down until tomorrow night, till the sheriff can make an appearance. I so moved.
Do you have a comment?
I'm gonna throw my rocks again. When a new board came along, the jail was killed, and now you have Judge Sermon saying what he's saying, well, and I say as far as he is concerned, seven years ago, he had the opportunity to do the right thing too. So the blame is not just with us, it's also with him. He had the authority to make a difference back then, and he chose not to, so that's why we're at where we are right now.
If I remember correctly, if my historical recollection is correct, I was commissioner seven years ago, barely, I was on my way out, and I do remember, although it's a little bit hazy, that the people of Beaufort County did not want to build a jail, or at least it was not, that was the implication I was getting. It was never sent to them as a bond referendum. In fact, all candidates were asked how they felt about a jail, and they were able to answer before they ran for office. And there was a negative opinion about building a jail at that time. So whether that happened before or after, the sentiment out there was pretty much collected by all. And there was an end run to build a jail using the, I believe, Farmer's Home. And the Farmer's Home wasn't gonna do it unless they thought that the people of Beaufort County were in favor of it. That's why you have bond referendums, to get a finite understanding of where the people are coming from. Do they want it or not? Well, to do an end run around the bond referendum, since the public sentiment was negative, there was a search for financing, and that financing, I believe, was gonna go through Farmer's Home. Was it another entity? Do you remember? What's Farmer's Home, wasn't it? Local government? Was it the local government? Okay.
Local government commission under the statutes of North Carolina, it was called consumer financing, was the way that they were gonna do it to avoid having a referendum.
Thank you, Hood. Well, you're really on top of that. Strike Farmer's Home, local government commission. And so that was attempted, but the local government commission didn't want to make any loan unless the sentiment in Beaufort County was such that the people of Beaufort County was in favor of it, because they were the ones that had to repay it. So I don't think it was the commissioners that made the difference here. Now, the commissioners could have been on a parade to build a jail and had the public going in a direction that would have been more positive towards building a jail, but that was not the case. So for whatever reason, the public did not want to build a jail at that time. It had nothing to do with the commissioners. Now, if the commissioners wanted to put it before the people, in the bond referendum, we would have had a finite understanding of what the public wanted to do, but the commissioners did not want to do that, assuming that the public was negative towards the new jail. So I just wanted to get that straight. Am I correct on that, Hood?
Yeah, you're basically right.
Okay, thank you.
Not entirely.
Well, how am I wrong?
The LGC would not loan us the money because Senator Cook wrote them a letter asking them not to do it. It was not because of John Q. Public, because if you look at it in its entirety, there were just as many people for it as were against it, but it's always the squeaking wheel that gets all the oil. The folk who were really in favor of it were pretty much quiet, so you cannot say the public did not want it. But the other thing is, nobody really celebrates building a jail. It's not one of the things you get happy about.
Ms. Chairman.
Regardless, I think what should have been done, for all those who were enthusiastic about building a jail, they should have fought for a bond referendum. They can do it now. We can, they can put that on a bond now. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering just how much power Judge Sermon's has legislating from the bench when it comes to building a jail.
Stan, can we get back, we need to get back and handle this.
Oh, yeah, well, this is kind of this.
We're not building a jail. What we're, right now, we're just trying to fix our detention center.
I heard in the comments from Judge Sermon's that we should have done this seven years ago. In other words, the sentiment there is we should do it now. I mean, I think we're getting tagged here. I think the other, I think this discussion is gonna have to come up.
But if we were to build the jail and start today, it would be a year and a half, it'd have nothing to do with this.
But I am wondering why Judge Sermon feels like he's negotiating for the county and spending money. I like Judge Sermon's. He's a friend of mine. I grew up with him. He'll tell you the same thing. We're friends. But I don't think this is entirely under his purview when it comes to the money allocation from the people of Beaufort County. He does not have police power, we do.
Well, I just want to point out that jails is permitted for 87 inmates, and the last, latest reports since they were forced to do the right thing on keeping people locked up, only 45 inmates. So, you know, you don't, today, debating building a new jail is totally moot, because we don't have enough prisoners to justify it.
No, we don't. If we were to build a jail today, it would be a very small jail, and it's not gonna be any of this.
Stan, we're not building a jail.
That's all part of the jail.
No, it's not. It's commissioners' hands. Well, still, that is commissioners'.
Commissioner Waters.
And the people's issue.
I would like for our county manager to bring us up to date on the situation with Craven County, and also the situation within the state as it relates to transferring prisoners or inmates to other locations.
Point of order.
Point of order. Let's vote on Hood and Stan's. What was your, what was your motion?
My motion is that we shut this meeting down until the sheriff can come and tell us the background on this, because the judge didn't decide to do this on his own, there's some poor service being handed out, there is something wrong somewhere. We, as commissioners, have the right to know that so that it can be fixed. It's not entirely in the sheriff's ballpark, and he's not here tonight because he's covering up something.
All those in favor of? All those in favor of Hood's motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Motion dies.
Commissioner Waters.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to recognize the county manager to bring us up to date on the Craven County population situation, as well as being able to transfer inmates to other locations within the state under COVID-19.
Brian?
Members of the board, it is my understanding, or at least what I, the agreement with Craven County is that we have an agreement with them to hold 40 inmates through July the 6th. That agreement ends July the 6th, and it's my further understanding, in fact, from an email that I received, and I think you guys received it about 10 or 15 minutes ago from chief deputy, is that Craven County is working on another memo of understanding with Carterak County, I believe, they got some work that has to be done. So we are coming to a close on the July 6th term. Is my further understanding that Department of Corrections is not taking prisoners, and that our folks have reached out, or the sheriff's office has reached out to other entities to try to help hold prisoners, and they're not doing that simply because of the COVID issues. Everybody's really tight on COVID right now. We had a meeting, I guess it was three, going on four weeks ago, where we talked about that. The opportunity arose that we should have an, have a conversation with Pitt County to talk about that, since they had a block, an entire block that's made up of four pods with a capacity of 96 inmates, 96 beds, that that would be an opportunity maybe for us to talk with them about doing that, because we would have to shut the jail down as we complete the final piece of this, where we work on the outside doors and tear out the control system. So that is where, that is where those conversations began. The operational piece of that was discussed between the sheriffs. The last time we had a conversation, when we were doing the fireproofing, you may recall, we were, we were going to have a conversation with Pitt County about using some of their facilities. I had, I had reached out, because I think a couple of commissioners had had some conversations with some of the Pitt County commissioners about that opportunity. I reached out to the county manager, and then got a call back from the county manager that said, "You need to have your sheriff call my sheriff." So that kind of stepped us out of it. That deal eventually fell apart. Now we find ourselves back in that same situation. So the operational issues were discussed between the sheriffs. It's my understanding that that initial number was, was $100 per bed, and it was for all 96. There was a meeting, as I understand, and I sent the board that next day, an email, is my understanding of that meeting. There was a meeting on Tuesday, last Tuesday, with the sheriff's office and representatives of the sheriff's office and Judge Sermon's. In our meeting Friday, Judge Sermon said that that was a meeting to discuss, he has to order that the jail be shut down and move those prisoners, so that when someone comes into the magistrate, then they're ordered as to where they're supposed to go. So it's my understanding that they have to have an order issued to do that. So they were discussing that order, and that's when Judge Sermon said, "I'm tired of playing with this. We are starting back up court system." As you well know, they have started that. He said, "I don't have capacity to put people in jail, and I need to put people in jail, and I want you guys to move faster than what you're moving, because I've gotta get court back opened up." We have 40 beds in Craven County, we're at a maximum over there, we have no more capacity. We've got, we're, we have 40 over there. We don't have anywhere for females to go. Dare County was taking our females, and when COVID broke out, they stopped. Again, the Department of Corrections is not taking inmates. So the discussion, again, operationally between the sheriffs, and we were waiting to get into the conversation about numbers, and I had had a conversation with Scott on the Friday before, and he said that it was his understanding, the agreement was being worked on between the sheriffs. I had another conversation with him that next Monday, and we were working on, we were working on the discussion about what the numbers might be, could be, and he said, "Well, you need to have your sheriff reach out to my sheriff to say that we need to negotiate those numbers more." I did that. Sheriff Coleman said that he was not going to reach out again to the sheriff in Pitt County. Then we got the notice about the meeting, and I had the meeting Friday. Friday afternoon, I had a conversation again with, with the Pitt County manager, and we now have a negotiated offer for housing inmates. The females, that agreement, or that tentative agreement, which is what we're bringing to the board to discuss, would be $100 per bed, per female inmate. It's my understanding that we typically have no more than 10 or 12 female inmates at any one time, that that's actually a high number for us. So that all females would go to Pitt County, they would be, it would be at $100 a bed per night, and they would be mixed in with their female general population. The rest of that negotiation was that Pitt County would agree to allow us to essentially lease or rent what they call E-block, which is the section of jail that's over there. It's actually, I understand, I've never been there, but they say it's a kind of a spoken wheel kind of situation. So you come into the main area, and then you come off to the side, and that block is there. So it's completely separated from the rest of the, from the rest of the blocks. That they would allow Beaufort County Sheriff's Office to staff that block, which is what we're doing over in Craven County with our detention officers. They would require us to lease from them a minimum of 75 beds. That would be at $75 per bed per night. If we went above the 75 number, if we went 76, so beds number 76 through 96, we'd step up to $100 a night. You wouldn't have to buy them as a block. You do have to buy the first 75 as a block at $75 each, but, but number 76 through 96 is at $100 a bed, per bed as you use it. There is a 60-day term where they would allow us to do that for 60 days once we moved inmates over there. After, if we went beyond 60 days, then all the beds would go to $100 a night. One of the, one of the pieces that they've got, we've got to, if we're going to make that deal with them, they've got some air conditioning units that they've got to replace. They're on track to do that. They say it'll take them five to seven working days to do that. It's gonna cost them a little over $19,000 to do it. What they're asking us to do is make a prepayment of that $19,000 to them, and they would credit that against our, against our bill for the next month. There is a seven-day out in that agreement, and you've got to copy the agreement. It's not the latest agreement. In fact, Scott, just about 10 minutes ago, Scott sent me one that had the updated numbers. But generally, it's the same, except for the updated numbers. There's a seven-day out for any reason. So our intent would be to move inmates over there, to get them out of Craven, as soon as the HVAC units are fixed or installed at the, at the Pitt Center. Move the inmates over there. We actually, we've got to do that before July the 6th. Get the inmates over there, have the sheriff's office staffing that, and then we would be there for a maximum of 60 days. It's our understanding from the construction contract that MTS says they're very confident they can be done by the first week in August, so that would give us a little bit of cushion, because we would probably end up being about mid-August with the 60 days. The services would include meals, routine medical, like sick call, medicines dispensing, those kind of things, would all be under the per diem rate. Obviously, like at any other facility, if an inmate has to leave the facility to go to medical, we're responsible for that medical, just like we're responsible for that medical if they're here. The Pitt County would take care of coordinating that movement, but we would obviously have to pay for it, and we have to pay for any medical expenses outside of the jail, like if they had to go to the hospital. They would also provide our folks with radio communications while they were there, and the things like canteen, video visitation, and other inmate things would be, would be covered through that agreement as well. So that is, that is essentially what that agreement was negotiated back to, and that's why we asked the board to come together on a special meeting, so we could figure out where we needed to be on that, because we are, we're kind of on a timeline. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions that we might have.
John? Okay, you go ahead. Go ahead.
What are we paying Craven right now?
We're currently paying Craven 70 for 40 beds.
Okay. And do we have stop loss on the medical?
We do have stop loss on the medical, yes. So that's a plan that was put in place last year, year before last.
And can the courts do video with Pitt?
I don't know the answer.
So we could cut down on the transfers back and forth?
I don't know that they have video arraignment capability here in the courthouse. I think they do at Pitt County, I think, but I don't think they have it here.
You can't do it with the first arraignment anyway.
Yeah, yeah, but everybody has one of those.
Yeah.
And what is the, how many times have we gone over 75? And what is the, how many times have we gone over seventy-five in male population?
Well, they haven't recently.
Male or total?
Uh, male.
Okay.
The, the concern with that was and, is that we don't know what kind of, we don't know what kind of capacity they're going to end up with. What, what we heard Friday from the judge was, "We're getting ready to start locking people back up." For the last couple of months, we haven't locked people up. Probationers haven't been what they call quick dips where they put them in when they violate and pull them back out. I don't think they've been doing that. That's my understanding and they're anticipating more of those coming in. So, our goal, of course, would be to try to keep it below seventy-five if at all possible.
So, what are they doing with the females right now if they're coming in? The magistrate's got to put them someplace.
The last, the last female that they had down there, they held downstairs or in the jail and then they moved her to a drug treatment facility, I believe is what it was. But we've been fortunate that we haven't had, I mean, they've had to hold them. And what we've got to do now is, is completely vacate that facility so they can finish the control panels and the doors and...
Well, when Ray and I were in there, I don't know, a week, a couple of weeks ago, they, there was one person in the whole jail and that person was being released. So, so it's been vacated, I would think.
Well, it's been, it's been open for receiving.
Right.
When folks go to the magistrate and they say, "You're going to now be, you're going to now stay," they've been booking them and then shipping them out, carried them to Craven. So, what this would do is essentially, it's my understanding, I've not been through that system, so I don't know exactly how that works, but from what I understand, what I hear them call is the blue sheet. What this would do would be completely close the jail so that if you went to the magistrate, when the magistrate issued you what they call, what they said was a blue sheet, that blue sheet would say, "You now go to the Pitt County Jail."
Right.
You are received at the Pitt County Jail. You're no, in the past, you were received here at our jail and then the sheriff's office staff figured out a way to, figured out somewhere to put you, either in Craven or, or wherever. But now, it wouldn't exist. The magistrate would still do their thing, but they would immediately go straight to Pitt and be received.
Right, all the intake would be there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which is what they do at regional jails.
Yeah, that's right.
Commissioner Langman?
The time period that you, that you think we're talking about, is that thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
The agreement that we have with them is sixty days. That's under the seventy-five dollar for seventy-five beds. It's our belief that we're going to be, in fact, they received a shipment today of the sliding mechanisms. They were delivered this morning. So, they're going to go to work heavy on those. There are some locks that are still not here. But the last conversation I had with, with county engineer was that MTS believes that they are, they are confident that they will be done by the first week in August, which then gives us a little bit of playroom in there on the sixty days to make sure everything's good and we can get folks back in before we trip over that hundred dollars.
And the projected cost for those sixty days is what?
So, on your, on your, if you go into the packet that I gave you, you'll see a spreadsheet there that says, "Pitt County Detention Center Offer." So, what, in figuring, we had to start somewhere. So, it, it says in, for female inmates in Pitt general population, a hundred dollars per bed. I assumed ten females a day, so for two, for the sixty-day period, that's sixty thousand dollars. It's really the only way to figure it, just say, "That's what we anticipate." I, I don't think we'll go over ten and I don't think we'll actually use that many, but I don't want to not have the appropriate amount.
That's sixty thousand dollars a month.
For two months, for sixty days.
Yeah, sure.
It's a thousand dollars a day, ten, ten females at a hundred dollars a day. And then under the male inmates, you'll see there's a ninety-six bed capacity. We're required to essentially purchase seventy-five of those beds at seventy, seventy-five dollars per night, whether we have one inmate in there or whether we have seventy-five inmates in there. So, that would be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which is our requirement. And then anything above that, bed number seventy-six through bed number ninety-six is a hundred dollars per bed, per day. Now, that, we would have to put someone in that bed to be charged for it. We don't automatically get charged, we don't have to hold those beds. So, that's another, that's another negotiating point that they were willing to work with us on. But for capacity's sake, if we said we used all twenty-one of those beds and we had to pay a hundred dollars a day for them, that'd be an additional hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to, for the, for the subtotal on the remaining bed capacity. So, the total for the male inmates is four hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. If you combine the two, the females and the males at maximum capacity, again, this is maximum capacity, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. There's currently two hundred thousand dollars in the budget, in the safekeeping budget under this jail project to offset that. And that is because we had originally anticipated, except for COVID hitting us, that we would have been finished by the, by the end of this month with that project. So, we would have been on track to do that. So, if you take out the two hundred from the five twenty-three five, it's three twenty-three five hundred is the additional funding that's needed. And again, this is at maximum rate. You know, the only thing that would trip that is if we went over, is if we went over the sixty days, which we're, we're confident that that won't happen. Again, you see sixty-day term. Actually, on the agreement that they've written, they put it for three months. We don't anticipate, we don't anticipate over sixty days. We have a seven-day out for any reason. So, if, if the guys working on the jail right now are able to, you know, really work hard and knock it all out and the locks come in and we're, we're less than sixty days, then we give them seven days notice and we're out. So, we're not locked into that, that term. You know, we don't have to pay that for that entire amount. The Dover County Sheriff's Office detention staff would staff that block and of course, again, the rates, the day-to-day rate would include the meals and sick call, we would be responsible for outside medical. So, that is, again, that is the maximum, under maximum capacity, that it would, that we would need to, to fulfill that obligation and you have a budget amendment that, that shows that for your consideration if you so choose to move in that direction.
You said the maximum, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. You said the maximum for those sixty days, if everything fall in place, which I, which I'm, I'm very, very skeptical of MTI, MTS, whoever making locks, you never know what trouble they're going to run into. But what you're saying, the maximum, if everything falls in place, is five hundred, seven?
Was it five? Yes, sir. It was five, the total was five twenty-three five. But there's two hundred already in the budget that we would be using anyway. So, it would be three twenty-three five. And that's, that's assuming that on day one, we're, we're filling all ninety-six beds and putting ten females in there, which I don't anticipate us doing that.
My other question is, what, I, I, what do they charge per day for federal inmates?
They haven't, it's, it's my understanding, it's what they told us, that they have a negotiated rate right now of a hundred dollars a day for a federal inmate.
Well, it would be cheaper for us to pay a hundred dollars a day and we wouldn't have to have all the men over there monitoring them.
That, we had that conversation. They do not have staffing to do that. They, in order to do that, they would have to staff up. It would take them about three months to staff up to be able to do that. That is, it's my understanding that that's something that Sheriff Dance has, has worked, has, has been asking her board of commissioners, would they allow them to staff up so that they could start taking federal prisoners and, and generating that revenue. They are not in a position to be able to do that right now.
And other than, as we check, as we check around any other jails, like Blaken County, you know, they, they're just bringing, they're with us to be on the same jail at the same time. It's going, I hate to say it, it's going, it's going to come because they're having a terrible time with that virus. But did we check around with any other facilities besides Pitt County?
I have relied upon sheriff's office to have those conversations with fellow, fellow jurors. I don't have those contacts. I did reach out to Washington County, to the manager there to talk to him about females and, and they were not able to do that because they are isolating, they're using their female section to isolate inmates as they come in, hold them so that they don't have issues.
I mean, you got, what's the county? Yeah, oh, where is it? Chatham?
Chatham County.
Randolph County. They have a new facility. Morganton, Burke County, and I know it's Blaken, isn't it? And they, I mean, it's, look like now, we don't have no options. Look like the hot horses just rode in on the road.
And I think what Sheriff Dance was saying, as Brian was saying, to, the feds said, "Hey, we want you to house some prisoners, sixty days to vet them," which is, she's very peculiar about that, "and then thirty days to train them." So, there would be a ninety-day wait. So, that's the reason that we just decided, can we roll those guys from Craven County over the pit?
And of the prisoners that we are talking about, I mean, the judge said he would start sending folks to prison. I mean, the prison, the inmates, and I'm not going to call them prisoners, some of them are in there just because they can't make bail or can't make bond. And all of, all the eighty or sixty, whatever we have is not in there because they robbed, they robbed Wells Fargo. Some of them are in there for child support fraud or some other of these little minor things. How many of those, I mean, I'd hate to say this, but how many of those could we stand to bond if, if, if minimize this number? I mean, if they're under ten thousand dollar bond, you don't have to put up a seventy-five or eighty dollars a hundred.
I couldn't answer that question, but I would, I would defer to the county attorney. I'm not sure you have...
I know, I'm just being facetious about that.
I'm not sure you're allowed by statute to post them on his bond.
But what I'm saying is, a lot of them is there because they can't make bail. It's not, now, the judge has the authority to say, "Hold until I come back." He might not come back in six months, right? You've got some judges that's rough enough to do that. Hold them until I come back and they got to sit down there and rock until he comes back, until he completes the circuit. But the question I have is, we got people down there that's, unless I overslept something, Mr. Manager, there had been a real, real heinous crime in this county and God knows when. So, there's not nobody down there that, that, that we ought to be keeping in there just because we can.
Mr. President?
On the last packet we got, at the last meeting, there were three prisoners that were in there with less than five thousand dollars, five thousand or less, was just three. We do have one in there for murder.
Well, we...
Well, so where are we with this, as far as the judge's order is concerned? Either we do this or the judge is going to order us to do this.
I think, I think the conversation was, the judge was trying to push it a little faster because he said, "I've got to get back in session and you've got to," and we do, "we've got to be able to put inmates somewhere so that we can finish the jail." And he was essentially saying, "I'm going to help move that process along."
You know, for anybody that watches the court system, there's nothing fast in the court system. It takes months and years. I've sat here over and over and over with murderers that have been in there for years without a trial, with other people that have been in there for, for serious crimes like rape and other things. They've been in there for years without a trial. So, for Judge Sermons to talk about the court system being speedy, I, I would like to see that. And since he's talking about that, I'm going to expect him to make it a whole lot more speedy than what it has been because based on history, that is a spurious argument.
Let me answer just one question. Will we all agree the best thing, the best thing we need to do is vacate the jail in order to finish these repairs on time?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that?
Well, I, well, I...
There's no objection.
Mr. Chairman, that's been a requirement all along. We've known that at some point, we would not be able to house even one in there because of the liability and the contractor, some of the work that he was going to have to do. So, you know, we're, we're approaching a date with, with Craven County of July the sixth. So, we really, we really do not have any options except to go to Pitt and to do it as quickly, and to do it as quickly as possible. I mean, you know, they're, they're sitting over there, I'm, I'm assuming, wondering what we're going to do, if we're going to, if we're going to do this agreement or not.
Ms. Chairman?
And that, you know, time, time is of the essence.
And I think too, travel, transportation time, when you've only got to go, what, eighteen miles to get a prisoner back? Again, if something changes in the court system, go get them or bring them back, it's got to be a plus. Mr. Dessers, Commissioner Dessers?
Questions for the manager. You said COVID was slowing us down repairing the jail doors. How, how did that slow us down?
It actually slowed down our delivery dates on some of the, on some of the, the parts that were...
The parts didn't slow down the man, the contractor?
I mean, they, they slowed down because they couldn't get the parts.
They couldn't get the parts.
If you remember, Christina made that presentation to the board a couple of months ago that said, "Because of COVID, some of the things are slowing down." Now, my understanding from her was that the slider mechanisms they got in today were supposed to come in after the other locks. So, to me, that's a good thing that, that we've already gotten those in. So, hopefully, things are moving a little bit better now. But, but we do have those in, they've got a good, two solid weeks of work, my understanding on doing those, but we got to get to the point where we can clear the jail out completely so that they can finish. We're going to be cutting out exterior doors and redoing those.
So, but this could be considered a COVID cost to the county, could it not?
Um, I mean, it's not, it is not a, I mean, that question came up Friday too because when we talked about money, I essentially said to them, "This is all the money I have in my budget and I can't, I can't do anything with you today without going back to the board if you want more money." And their comment was, "Well, you need to go back to the board because we want more money." And, and the question was, "Well, this is COVID related. You've got some COVID money, you could fund that."
Who said that?
The folks from, the folks from Pitt. Actually, the manager, the manager said that. And, and I would say to you that it's probably not because it is not a direct response to COVID. It's not, it's not responding to COVID. Now, our plan, and we talked to the board about that and essentially, I think the North Carolina Pandemic Response Office, in fact, on one of their latest conference calls encouraged counties to do it. What we're doing is, we're going to use the funds that they gave us to reimburse our public safety staff their salaries and then that frees up that money for the board for other uses. So, when you go around like that, you, you do have some, some additional funding.
Quite a question next. We have talked about having to house jail, uh, people in other jails and we've talked about a cost. And can you recollect what was the best cost we were being charged in the earlier days? Just so I can have a relative understanding of what was then and what all of a sudden is now?
Um, for what I recall, fifty, fifty-five dollars a day.
That was a figure that's sticking in my mind.
State misdemeanor, which is where the state pays to put misdemeanor inmates in county jails so they don't put them in state. I think that's fifty-five dollars.
And we were getting that kind of cost too with other counties, right?
Some of them. And then as, as time continued, because there's, that, that is not something that the state says. That is an individual rate that's decided by...
It's a market, it's a market.
It is a market.
Whatever a market is.
And obviously, the market dried up really quick. Now, it's, it's a good thing, I mean, they were, they were nice enough to negotiate with us down from a hundred dollars a bed to seventy-five. That's only five dollars more than what we're paying at Craven. So, we have a larger capacity.
For some reason, when I was talking to Charlie the other night, I, the, the figure forty dollars a night stuck in my head, but that was wrong. I said, "That's awfully cheap." And he said, "Well, we, we staff our own people, use our own people to staff it." And that, that made sense to me since they're just offering up space. But it was never forty dollars a night in Craven?
No, it was forty beds.
Forty beds, yeah, yeah, I see that.
Seventy dollars.
Commissioner Dessers, it used to be the old jail fee that came down from the court system was forty dollars a day jail fee. That's what people who were committed to the jail used to have to pay, the jail fee and it was forty dollars.
Oh, thanks. Appreciate that. Other, other, the other options that have not been completely researched as your understanding, of course, you, you may not know because maybe the sheriff or his deputy, chief deputy have not been completely forthcoming, which is not your job to ride herd over them. One of the reasons I think it's important that they speak to us is so we can find out for the record what they have done and what those figures are. Because we're really making a lot of decisions with Judge Sermons getting involved, putting us in a hammer and amble situation and a bad, very bad position to be negotiating with an adjoining county. Does that make sense to anybody other than me? What I would like to do, if, since this is something that we don't really get to negotiate and I don't understand why we don't negotiate... to negotiate, and I don't understand why we don't negotiate it since we're the ones that tax the people of the county, but the sheriff negotiates it, why shouldn't we talk to sheriff about those negotiations and find out if he has done all he can do? Does that make sense? I mean, it's kind of important, it's a lot of money. And I, I think we, we have, we have the people of Beaufort County who pay the freight, not only for the sheriff and his staff, but for the jail. We need to know what the, what's happened. We, we need a, some kind of historical context on these negotiations. And I'm, I'm sure since this is such a big piece of what the sheriff does, he's got very good records as to what he's done, who he's talked to, when he's talked to them. And either he probably won't see the sheriff, because I don't think he's been here since I've been a commissioner, but maybe the chief deputy would come here and talk to us. Now, I say since I've been a commissioner, with, with him as the sheriff. I remember years ago when Alan Jordan would come and then Chief Deputy Harry Maris had picked up the slack after Hood ran. You're laughing. That was funny. But I remember even back in the days when Sheriff Shepard would come and speak to us at length. He was very open about his business. So, but I think it's important, after taking you guys on that little historical path, that we talk to the sheriff or his representative. Seriously, and I say we meet another night to do so. We, we. We'd be moving rather hastily, having a judge legislating from the bench what the people of Beaufort County should pay and not pay, inserting himself in the negotiations as you spoke of. He sounded like he's a very big part of the negotiations. But I, I don't know if that's the proper way that this is done. I don't think he's the money guy. We're the money guys. I don't even think the sheriff is really by statute the money guy. I know we are.
Yeah, you had two money guys. And, and again, we, you've got the sheriff from Pitt County and then you've got the Beaufort County.
Are they by statute the money guys?
Not the money guys, but they're stating what they need, what they've been told from their county manager.
Would the county commissioners make a decision there?
Pitt County?
Yeah.
Pitt County is.
They can make a decision, as well as we can make a decision. I just want to have more information.
I, I have a question that goes along with what Stan's talking about of the county attorney. Is the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office a body corporate?
A body corporate?
Mm-hmm.
It's elected.
Is that a, is he a body corporate under the law?
I think probably is.
He raises his own revenue? He makes his own decisions front to end? Body corporate covers a lot of things.
I would, well, I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay. Well, that's a good answer because, because I don't think he is a body corporate. And we've got a situation here in this agreement where the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office as a body corporate is conducting business with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office as a body corporate. And I challenge that. We, in other words, I don't think we should be, I don't think we should be approving this agreement until we know whether these guys are body corporates or not. I don't think they can contract with each other. I think the counties have to contract with each other.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Orders. It's my understanding, our duty as commissioners, as it relates to the sheriff's office and to the detention center, is that we furnish the building. We chose to go into a construction project to upfit the door locking mechanism. And we knew when we went into it that we were gonna have to have space. And those alternatives have run act. And the only alternative that we have is with Pitt County. Now, it would be nice to get the sheriff in here or the deputy in here to go back into the background and the history of everything that's going on. But we, we've been aware of that. We, we've been aware that, that we've got inmates that's been going to different places. It's been going on for months. So my contention is, is that we, you know, every day that we wait is a day that the construction is gonna be held up and they're not gonna be able to do their job. And what, what happens if we sit here and we don't do our duty and we're interested in history about the negotiation and Pitt gives up on us? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna take them to Commissioner Deathrich's house? We gonna take them to Commissioner Richardson's house?
Bring them over there, I'll handle them. And I'll have some help.
You know, I, 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 I think our duty is to take action to go ahead and solve this problem. I mean, we either can turn the deal down or not.
Ms. Chairman.
I mean, excuse me. I mean, so.
Sorry.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this agreement and we go ahead and amend our budget for the sixty-day period that we're talking about, so that we can go ahead and move this thing off the dead center.
Please, sir. Point of order before you get a second. I, I don't think we have an answer about whether these parties can contract or not. I don't think you can make a motion to enter into an illegal contract.
I think, I think the contract that we signed with, I think it was Cabarrus County, if I remember correctly, came in. I think that was signed by the, by the sheriff's office.
Doesn't matter. If it's illegal, it's still illegal.
Well, I mean, we can, we can get the proper signatures on the document. That's.
I, can I?
Go ahead, Commissioner Richard.
Uh, definitely. Uh, I think, yeah, you can, you can get the proper signatures. You can take a vote right now, but it's under the cloud of maybe not being negotiated properly to the satisfaction we, the representatives of the people of Beaufort County, who are taxed and are taxed by us and no one else. I don't think the sheriff does the taxing. We request that, we request that he collect the taxes if necessary. But I think we're the ones that actually do the taxing and have to make the request of the sheriff to do so. So I think, I think we're moving with all haste for whatever reason. And I'll be honest with you, a lot of this information, I'm just getting today. So you guys are more in the know. I, I get that. And but, uh, and you speak of Cabarrus, what went on with Cabarrus County. Maybe, maybe that was handled improperly as well. We don't know. We need to know that. We can find, find that out in a matter of time. It's not gonna take our attorney too long to figure that out. And tomorrow is another day. I wish you would amend your motion to move forward with that contract once we've had a chance to speak with the sheriff or his representative and ask some rather pertinent questions. And that can be done tomorrow. Or as soon as we can have another special call with me.
I'm, I'm not gonna back up on the motion. If it fails, it fails.
Okay.
I'll second.
I got a question. What about options?
We, we don't know. We need to find out.
Everybody's kicking us to the curb. I mean, what is, what?
We don't know. We're being told what to do.
Yeah.
Getting a lot of information.
Well, I, I will be the first to tell you, when, when I left home, I, my mind was already made up that I wasn't gonna vote for this because I thought it was gonna be a million dollars. And I, I appreciate whoever negotiated it down to three hundred and twenty-three thousand. Well, we got two hundred already allocated according to the manager. Am I correct? So I, I, and I hate the, for us to play around, play around in Pitt County, walk away from the table. And I'm not pleased with the deal at all. I'm gonna be the first to tell you I'm not pleased with it. But then again, uh, as, I'm a, I'm a still, I'm a still one of Mr. Richardson's cliches. He who has the gold rules.
That's right.
This time they got the gold.
Ooh.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, four, three, motion passed.
Wow. You guys have no interest in finding out about what's been negotiated with whom? Are we protecting somebody here? I don't, I don't, I'm not getting a whole lot of information. I think that we're just operating in the dark and throwing the people's money around willy-nilly.
Mr. Richard, I, I, he was invited today.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority to drag him in here.
No.
But he can dictate what contracts we get entered in.
Yeah.
And sign, right? Is that correct? That's what, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, he's all-powerful.
Yeah, he's the man.
He's the king, king of Beaufort County.
And he's a body corporate according to you guys. You sign for him to sign a contract.
Who would be talking there? I don't get that.
So move, move to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Adjourn.